Good evening. My name is Max Parker. I'm president of the Board of Trustees for San Angelo Independent School District, and I want to welcome you all to our regular meeting of our Board of Trustees that's being held here tonight on Monday, October 17. I appreciate your patience. We were a little bit delayed because we've been in a training having to do with safety, and our whole board team had to be there, and we got completed as soon as we could, but it's something we take very seriously, so I appreciate and hope you understand our delay. I'm going to read a script that we read before every meeting that has to do with our rules and procedures. So as I've already said, I want to welcome everyone here, and also want to welcome everyone that is watching this replay on Suddenlink Channel 4. We appreciate everyone's interest in our school district and our students. All items that we'll be discussing at our meeting tonight have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, the board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most, if not all, of the items on our agenda this evening were previously discussed at our earlier pre-agenda board workshop last Monday. As members of the SAISD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent and administrative staff, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, prior to taking any votes on any agenda item, I will ask audience members if they would like to make any comments on that agenda item. Anyone wishing to make comments on any agenda item should do their best to limit their comments to five minutes or less. Also, we have an item on every one of our meeting agenda that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team on an item not on the agenda an opportunity to do so. Please fill out one of the forms in the back should you want to speak on an issue not on our agenda, and again, please limit your comments to five minutes or less. Also, please understand if you speak to us on an item not on the agenda, under state law, the board cannot reply to you except to say thank you for your comments since the matter's not been posted for discussion. In compliance with state law, these proceedings are recorded and become a part of SAISD's permanent legal record. In order that the recording will adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I also ask, as I remind myself and our fellow board members, please turn off or silence your cellphones now if you haven't already done so. Again, it's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's meeting. I thank you again for taking time to join us this meeting. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of our district. All right. I would now like to ask Reverend Christie Crisp, Associate Pastor for First United Methodist Church, to lead us in our invocation.
Be pleased to bow your heads with me. Dear holy and loving God, we just give you thanks. We give you thanks for these leaders that they have given their time to be able to lead this school, to be able to lead this people and these children and all of these teachers. I ask you to place a hedge of protection around them, and Lord, to help this time have words that will continue to uplift and grow this district so that all students may have an equal opportunity to be educated and go out and have the best future. I ask you to bless each and every one here and all of those that will be watching later, and continue to use this school to be a wonderful presence in this community. I ask all this in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you Reverend Crisp. At this time, I'm going to call forward some of our Glenmore Elementary students, Xavier McGee, Brady Coyle, John Jimenez, Lexi Jimenez, and Skylar Poppy to come forward, and they're going to lead us in our pledge of allegiance to the United States flag and to the Texas flag. So, students, turn around. All of you face the flag, and would everyone please stand?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Now, students, if you'll stay up. Parents, you can come forward to take photos if you'd like. Department in regards to some recognitions.
Good evening, Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board. As you entered the administration building this evening, you may have seen some artwork that greeted you. Tonight, we are celebrating our young artists by recognizing our SAISD Fire Prevention Poster Contest winners. These students helped their campus communicate important information about actions they can take to stay safe during a fire emergency through artwork. We are so proud of each of you, as are your teachers, your principals, and your family members who are here with you. We will start by announcing our third grade winners, followed by our fourth and fifth grade. When I call your name, please come forward and come stand at the front up here, and we will hand you your poster. From third grade, our poster winners are: Fourth place Elizabeth Vu for Concho Elementary; third place Jessie Heho- oh, excuse me, Hinojosa, excuse me, of Bel Air Elementary; second place is Max Bly of Bowie Elementary; and first place is Sylvia Eckler-Dongrill of Fort Concho Elementary. From fourth grade, our poster winners are Alejandro Perez-Pagan, Fort Concho Elementary; third place Lexi Jimenez, Glenmore Elementary; second place A.J. Jimenez, Austin Elementary; and first place Riley Woteck, Austin Elementary. From fifth grade, our poster winners are Emma Hines, Bonham Elementary; third place Heaven Hudson, Reagan Elementary; second place Leonardo Figueroa Perez. That's Fort Concho Elementary. And first place Zoe De Luna, Fort Concho Elementary. Congratulations to each one of you. We also want to recognize the Fire Prevention Officer and Fire Inspector Chris Christian, who's here with us this evening. Chris, if you'd like to come forward. Thank you, Chris, for bringing us this wonderful contest and campaign to educate our students and families, and for all you do to keep us safe every day. Dr. Detloff, Chris, if y'all would get together for a photo, it'd be wonderful.
Parents, you can come up closer also if you want to take your photos. Students, you just stay there to all your parents till everybody gets all the photos finished. Come on up closer if you want to, parents. Dr. Detloff, Dr. Detloff.
Yes, so if y'all would start over here and start with Ms. Becky, or Ms. Pam, and shake the hands and go around. Thank y'all.
So can I squirt or then I'm going to be cleaning my hands? Perfect.
We're so proud of y'all. Mr. Parker and members of the board and Dr. Detloff, I'm going to move on to another recognition. Tonight, we have a very honorable recognition of a group that has been a blessing and supporting our San Angelo ISD students and schools for nearly two decades, our friends at DESK, which many of you know is short for Donate Educational Supplies for Kids. These incredible supporters of public education with us tonight, and some who couldn't make it this evening dedicate their time, energy, and talents to raise funds for our SAISD students who are in need of school supplies, school supplies to learn, grow, create, and think critically. To provide a little background for those who are unfamiliar with DESK, in 2004, DESK founder and board president Eric Wilson identified an unmet need in our community and set his focus, determination, and generous spirit on finding a solution. That solution was the formation of a Board of Concerned Concho Valley Community Members who set out to raise funds for SAISD students in need of school supplies. Since 2004, DESK has raised nearly a million dollars and brought countless smiles to our students, ultimately helping them succeed in the classroom and beyond. This year, DESK has generously given our students school supply money in a total amount of $72,011.2. That's over $70,000 that is allocated and then distributed out to all of our campuses, helping individual children have the supplies they need to be confident and to be on a path to succeed, and importantly, covering a need that otherwise many teachers would feel compelled to do as well, so really helping our teachers too. Each campus in the district receives a percentage of the total amount of the money raised. I also went to provide you a closer glimpse of what this looks like in our schools, many of which are comprised of a majority of under-resourced families. In speaking with one of our principals, she told me a few stories, and this is just a few of many. DESK supports new foster families working to prepare three foster children for their first day of school after being pulled from difficult circumstances and put into a new home just days before. DESK supports a single mother working hard in an SAISD cafeteria to make sure her child has all his needs met. DESK supports a sweet child who I've personally met who lost her mother two years ago to feel loved and cared for with the gift of school supplies. These are just three stories of many, but what an impact. Please join me in recognizing DESK members and contributors for helping SAISD students receive the supplies they need, and joining the district in supporting their hopes and dreams this school year and for the past 18 years. Thank you to McDonald's, First Community Federal Credit Union, Dr. Pepper, Sam's Club, KLST, San Angelo Standard Times, Town Square Media, and our very own Central High School Key Club. We are honored to have with us here tonight some of the DESK board members so we can show our gratitude. DESK board members, when we call your name, please come forward, and Dr. Detloff will join us for a photo too. So, Ms. Diane Wilson, and Ms. Vicky Lozo. And then not present tonight but equally appreciated are Ken Grimm, Eric Wilson, Cheryl Book, Andy Meyer, Jaclyn Ochoa, Elizabeth Jost, and Jennifer Call. So please join me in giving the DESK board a very appreciative round of applause and our gratitude. Our principals are here tonight, and I know that they know that this is so very much appreciated, so thank you so much, DESK. We are so thankful for our 23 outstanding campus leaders who make a difference in the lives of nearly 14,000 children and 2,000 staff members in our community every day. This October, National Principals Month, we celebrate the visionary leadership and dedication they bring to growing the hopes and dreams of our future-ready learners and lift them up for each of their unique gifts they bring to leading a school community. Being a principal is certainly one of the hardest and most important jobs in our society, impacting the future of our community and nation while also filling many roles from instructional leader to active listeners, to meeting with concerned parents, to planning safety drills, to a myriad of other duties. Thank you, principals. This year, we invited our SAISD students and staff in our San Angelo community to share personal messages of gratitude, and what better way to celebrate our principals than share a few of those heartfelt messages that apply to really all of our difference-maker leaders? So I'm going to read a few of them. "There is a gifting and a calling to be an administrator, both of which you operate in very well. I am grateful for you being a shield of protection, a sounding board, and a human who is personable and approachable. Your very presence is what a true leader is, one who cares for his tribe. Thank you not only for being a dedicated and committed leader, but for creating and modeling a culture of acceptance and expectation. Your willingness to always do what is best and right by students has supported my child's learning and growth during some of the most challenging years of her life. The space you have established and continue to cultivate for our children through your leadership is making a difference. You are so awesome. You are my favorite principal in the whole wide world. I like when you come in every day and give us high fives." That was a little one of our younger kiddos. "You have gone above and beyond to help continue the education for these little minds. May God bless you abundantly for all the blessings you give so freely. We value you and your hard work, and pray you continue to have a safe, blessed year. Thank you again for being such a wonderful person with a beautiful heart." Bear with me on this one, Ms. Lupita. Creo que es difícil encontrar personas con tanta dedicación y amor a su profesión. No solo se trata de ser buenas personas, se trata de las cosas que hace para marcar la diferencia. Gracias, gracias, gracias. "I don't think there are words eloquent enough to describe how much you have impacted me as a teacher, leader, mother, and friend. You have taught me lessons that are invaluable to my success, both in and out of the classroom. You constantly push me to think deeper, love harder, and set higher expectations for my students regardless of ability level. I am continually impressed with your ability to unite your campus community. You have fostered a sense of support and appreciation that allows us as parents, as well as your students, to feel safe and reassured. Your long hours and hard work make such a difference to ensure the learning and growth of your students. It's such a heartwarming and reassuring feeling as a parent to see my child be acknowledged by you outside of and during regular school hours. It shows your genuine care and support. We are forever grateful for all you do." And again, these are messages that were maybe directed at one principal, but we know you, each and every one of you, does so much every day to make our students, our staff, and our community feel this way. And that is just a small sampling of the many, many appreciative personal message we received in gratitude for all that you difference-maker principals do. Now, we would like to thank each of you, so if you can please come up when we call your name, and Ms. Molly Johnson-Turk's going to help me out here. We will hold our appreciative applause until we have all of our principals here with us this evening that are available, and then take a group photo. We also have a small token of our appreciation for each of you to metaphorically and literally fill up your cups. Our friends and supporters of public education at Gandy Inc. and Buttercup All Day Cafe have provided custom difference-maker travel mugs for each of you, and complimentary coffee drink of your choosing monthly through May, so you can go once a month and get your cup filled up at Buttercup when you bring the cup with you. So if you can please join us, Ms. Lori Herndon from Alta Loma Elementary, Ms. Brooke Columbach from Austin Elementary, Ms. Laura Eubank from Bel Air Elementary, Ms. Ginger Luther from Bonham Elementary, Ms. Ashley Gold from Bowie Elementary, Ms. Bertha Carrasco from Bradford Elementary, Ms. Mindy Goodnight from Crockett Elementary, Ms. Lori Barton from Fort Concho Elementary, Ms. Terri Gould from Glenmore Elementary, Ms. Shannon Kleepack from Goliad Elementary, Ms. Stacy Fisher from Holloman Elementary, Dr. Jennifer Ryan from Lamar Elementary, Mr. Colton Curtis from McGill Elementary, Ms. Tricia Hartman from Reagan Elementary, Ms. Kim Spurgers from San Jacinto Elementary, Mr. Clayton Hubbard from Glenn Middle School, Mr. Joe Gandar from Lincoln Middle School, Dr. Amy LaMester from Lone Star Middle School, and Mr. Bill Waters, there he is, from Central High School and Central High School on Oaks. And then not here with us tonight, but we are again equally appreciative, Ms. Dana Phelps from Fannin Elementary, Ms. Kay Scott from Santa Rita Elementary, Mr. Zachary Ramirez from Lakeview High School, and Ms. Claudia Basetta from Pace &amp; Carver. Dr. Detloff, if you can please join us for a group photo. Thank you, principals, this month and all year long. You truly, truly are our difference-makers.
I'm sorry, what, any part you say? That concludes the recognitions. Those are great recognitions when we can recognize all our kids and all that DESK does for us, and they've done it so many years, and then all our principals. It was a thank you, Molly and Whitney, for bringing those recognitions. All right, going on with our agenda now, we have our minutes that we need to approve. This is our new board member. Now, we have our minutes that we need to approve from our September 12, 2020 Special Finance Pre-Agenda Meeting and our September 19, 2022 Regular Board Meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Dindell and a second by Ms. Mizele Flint.
Lupita.
Lupita. Oh, I'm sorry. Good job. All right, then Ms. Roya is our second. Is there any other board discussion? Is there any public comment? If not, all in favor say aye, all opposed say no. Motion passes. Now, we, as I mentioned earlier, this is a time for public comments on topics not on this agenda, on this meeting. I didn't get any paperwork that anybody signed up. Okay. All right, we have no public comments on topics not on our agenda tonight, so I'll now turn it over to Mr. Henry for reports from Park Hill, Smith, and Cooper on our Facilities Assessment Report.
Thank you for having me here tonight. I'd like to welcome RJ Lopez and Alan Wolfe with Park Hill, Smith, and Cooper. We've been working for them, with them, for nearly 10 months. They are going to present their report on, and give recommendations on our facility assessment and long-range plan.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, members of the board, we appreciate you having us again this evening.
Thank you.
I wanted to come and summarize some of the efforts that we've been undergoing to study your facilities and then make some recommendations at the end of the meeting. As Mr. Henry mentioned, we've been in a process, as you know, going all the way back to actually in the fall, start a data collection, and then we've had a chance to work with your great principals and staff, your facility staff, and your administrative team on gathering information and doing some analysis of your facility, so we wanted to share a few thoughts on that this evening. At the last meeting, we made some recommendations for you to consider, and I was going to cover that again as review before RJ talks about the current recommendations tonight. Also, we've talked a little bit about the ideal campus size or target campus size, if you will, for elementary schools, so we wanted to talk a little bit more about that in depth at our meeting on the- At our meeting on the September 19th, we talked about conditions that might indicate repurposing, merger, closure of particular campuses. So we wanted to talk about the criteria that we use, just to let the data speak to us in terms of the facility, the physical condition of the facility. And then at the end, we'll talk about master planning options. At our last meeting, we discussed for a number of reasons, our recommendation that the district look to move to elementary, the number of elementary campuses from 17 to 14 for a number of, for a number of reasons. And then continue to reduce campuses and further balance enrollment to somewhere in the 500 to 650 student range. Keeping in mind the needs that you have for special programs and the homes that are needed for those, those programs. Throughout the process, we've really endeavored, and your staff has been so good, to keep our focus on service to the student. That's something that you said that's been repeated over and over to us, whether it's your, your administrative team, your facilities team, your principals. It's been all about the kids and it's been all about serving the students. We wanted to consider the sustainability of these campuses long term, and so as you see the summary slides, I think you'll recognize that we've endeavored to do that. We want to better utilize the existing capacity in all the buildings. As we've discussed before, there's, there's quite a bit of capacity in many campuses in the district, and we want to see ways that we could potentially better utilize those campuses. But all in all, we want to be sure we're also providing services for some of the special programs as well, as you can see listed on the screen. So wanted to talk a little bit, we've had the question about how did we come up with the ideal campus size? And shared this slide with you all at the pre-agenda meeting. These are some districts that we've, are familiar with and have been through a merger consolidation process throughout the, throughout the years. And I think one of the things that's important to understand is the trend has been towards larger campus size. Whereas several of your campuses, the enrollments are, you know, in the 270 to, say, 350 range. What we're seeing around the state are districts moving to a larger footprint or larger building. Typically, the elementary schools that we're building now are between 500 and 800 students. And we're not seeing districts that are building that 200, 250 to 400 student. But these are just some examples of districts that have, have done one or multiple mergers or consolidations. When we talk about a 600 student school, the question is, why, why is that a good target range? Or why is that a good goal for San Angelo ISD? Currently, your capacity range, depending on campus, is somewhere between 365 to up to 770 in the largest and newest facility. One of the things we look at and we found in talking with educators and again, keeping the eye on the service to the student is the examples that we've worked with getting more resources to the students. And we've added this, we've updated this slide from last week just to show, for example, this is a maker space. Now Lamar has, has one of these spaces, and in some of the campuses, those improvements have been, have been made. But just think about the ability to improve the educational environment and provide more resources, both potentially personnel and in the facility. One of the other things we look at in terms of a 600 student school versus, say, 800, 850 is just some of the core facilities that you have to have. That, that particular size is kind of the sweet spot for building one gymnasium and so forth and operating one administration area. We have found, just as I was mentioning before, you can still provide that smaller group learning environment for students even within a larger school. And many, if you've ever heard of the term "school" within a school, that's what we're talking about in this case. We found, and this is really exciting too, that there's the opportunity, if you think about it, to strengthen your professional learning communities. Think about having five or six teachers per grade level potentially that can, can work together and plan and do that great work that they, they do. As nothing replaces a highly qualified teacher in a classroom. And so having that ability for them to collaborate and address students' personal needs is really hugely important. And we think that that can be done in this kind of environment. And then also, when we look at the, the cost of operating schools, smaller enrollment schools can be, can be more expensive than, than those around the 600 student. And so there's kind of a target that, that we have examined as we've been analyzing the school facilities. And the idea being that this frees up more, more dollars for instructional capabilities within, within the school. We've shown this, we just added the range here, but we've shown this slide several times. But these, this is all the, this is 2018 data, but this is all of the elementary schools in the state. And if you look at where all the gray dots are, that's the predominant size. So you can see in that range, that 600 student range, that the, that, that's the predominant size in the state as well. So that recommendation falls in well with the data that we have on other, other schools in the state. I also wanted to share just a case study of a project that, that I've worked on that, in Lubbock ISD, where they've, we've actually undergone this process in a 2010 capital campaign and also in 2018. In this case, this most recent example, we had three elementary schools all operating at about 200 students per elementary school. And we were able to, to do one, one school that combined all, that merged all the, the schools into one campus. And we're still able to get those smaller learning environments, kind of school within a school, as we were talking about, and save a good, a good deal of funds that the district can reinvest into other, other programs. In this case, they're, they're going to be partnering with the AgriSTEM program that's at the high school level, and they're going to be able to do some of those programs at this campus. So really exciting. And just, just an idea that I wanted to show you, but in this case, the yellow is the, is the budgeted cost for that one campus versus the three stacked blocks you can see there. That's the, the cost of what it previously was, operating three different schools. RJ's gonna share with you a little bit more information if there are not any questions so far.
Good to be back out here. I also enjoyed seeing some future architects out there with some of those drawings and floor plans. It took me many years to realize not everybody enjoys drawing that type of stuff. You just naturally, when you like to do it, you assume everybody does. But yeah, let's talk about some of the factors that go in here. The facility assessment was the first thing that we went through, just walked all the buildings, documented any deficiencies that are needed for potential improvement. We also measure it based on educational and spatial adequacy. So that's classroom size, cafeteria size, kitchen size. Next, we look at age of the facility. Is it 50 years old, 70 years old, almost 100 years old in some cases? Next, we looked at capacity versus enrollment. How full is the school? What are the past trends in that as well? We also looked at operational cost, and Alan kind of touched on that a little bit, and we'll have a couple more highlights on that. Campus expandability, how much site is available if you do need additional space for some of the educational environments that are needed. And then lastly, we looked at the locations of some of the special programs that, when a majority of these schools were built, they did not exist. So these are, these are things that new schools are coming equipped with that the older schools just, just weren't planned for. This is a quick snapshot of the facility assessment, looking at each piece of infrastructure that was looked at along with the finishes, roofing. You can see kind of down that list, the left list out the system that was looked at. The top lists the, the seven schools that were looked at. These particular schools did not receive a large amount of work on previous bonds and were in need of the most improvements. The little red hammer kind of shows that the, the system needs to be repaired or replaced. The little yellow yield sign means repair or replace within five years, and then the green dot means replace beyond five years. So that gives us, oh. There we go. That gives us a good snapshot of, of the systems throughout the school. And there's actually a cost associated with each one of those, those dots that help us determine repair, replace decisions. And, and none of these alone really would say repair, replace. It's really looking at all of the metrics and factors combined that helps move in a certain direction, I think. This is just another one, functional adequacy versus spatial adequacy, trying to measure how well it operates compared to when it was built, and then also how well it operates compared to a brand new school. So we want to evaluate what's there and evaluate it compared to a brand new facility. And so you can see some of those, some of those scores and some of the expandability. Obviously, green being better and red being a little lower. All right, I know we've got a lot of investigations that we've done over the past eight to 12 months. I'm not really hitting all the high points, but this is just some of the information that we went through. A question came up about if we're talking about combining schools, are we going to create any problems in the future? What has happened over the past 10 years that could help us kind of decide what could potentially happen over the next 10 years? You can see each one of these graphs is the enrollment at each campus over the past 10 years. In general, most of the campuses are going down in enrollment over the past 10 years. I believe there's one campus that is going up, and that was Bonham. You can see that in the middle there, that's kind of that, that blue line. I don't think my pointer will work on it. But in general, on the right-hand side, you can see there's quite a bit of a large drop in Goliad, which I think was, was surprising to, to some. But in general, the trend has been lower in enrollment. We've got a couple campuses that we've highlighted. Each campus, we've actually ran through the same numbers. But these were the ones that kind of kept getting talked about the most, really. So I'll start with Altaloma Elementary. You can see right now, to compare to the closure criteria, we need about $20 million to renovate that existing building. Currently, the functional adequacy score is around a C when compared to a new building of, that would meet TEA standard spaces. It's 72 years old. Normally, about 60 to 70 is when we start talking about a building being beyond its useful life, depending on the maintenance over time. Enrollment capacity, right now it's at about 287 is enrolled and has a capacity of 460 students. So it's about 62% full. The operational cost is about $2 million a year, and there is a potential savings of about $500,000 per year with a combination of a closure or merger. And right now, the site campus expandability, we have it as, as medium, but it would actually have to go across a relatively large neighborhood street to be able to do so. So it's, it's almost a low to medium, just because it would be pretty tough to expand across that, that large street. The next campus is Austin Elementary, and this one has a capital cost of about $22 million in current needs. The functional adequacy is a little lower on a, as a D there. The campus age is older, and that kind of lends itself to some of those functional adequacy scores. You know, the library's been expanded three or four times just because it's trying to meet the current standards. But the building, it just makes it hard to meet those current standards. The enrollment's about 380 students, and the capacity is about 564. So that's another campus that's at about 67% enrollment. Pretty similar numbers as far as operational cost goes and, and cost savings over time. And it is extremely landlocked with no dedicated drop-off drives really beyond major streets. And so it also has some infrastructure plumbing issues and some, some other problems that come with the 93-year-old building. All right, so based on all those investigations and reports, now we've been looking at various versions of master plan options. Over time, and with reviewing the various reports, we have a list of keep, keep and potentially add and renovate, or, and lastly, close slash repurpose. And these are based on the metrics from the facility condition report, the functional adequacy, kind of all those things across the board and current enrollment. So I'm not gonna read through that entire list, but that's been just another metric or gauge for us over the, the past almost year. The draft master plan is outlined in, I guess it would be three to four phases, depending on how you want to call it, since we have a 1A and 1B. Phase 1A would start actually within about a year. And this is labeled draft because nothing is, is final, obviously, but this is where we're at currently with their, our, our report and the process. But phase 1A in 2023 would be merge San Jacinto Elementary students to Reagan, utilize San Jacinto for pre-kind, pre-kindergarten in a functional needs campus. And then lastly, merge San Jacinto, Fannin, Altaloma, and McGill pre-K and functional needs students to San Jacinto. So it would still be utilizing that San Jacinto campus to offer some of the special programs that we've discussed. Phase 1B would be merge Altaloma with Fannin and repurpose slash close Altaloma. Phase 2 would be, 2024 is what we're showing that now, and that would be to expand McGill and merge Austin students to McGill, and then repurpose or close Austin. And then lastly, in the future phases that we're showing from 2028 to 2030, merge Bowie to Crockett, repurpose and close Bowie, readjust and increase enrollment at Lamar, Bel Air, and Glenmore. And then we would have future phases to address Reagan. You can see on the, the bottom there, phase 1A, 1B, and phase 2 would be approximately $20 million currently. This is all planned to be done without a, a bond measure. So what does that look like actually with the boundaries? This is your current enrollment zones. I know it's kind of hard to see there, but in the middle is Austin, McGill, Altaloma, and Fannin. So it's kind of the, the green, pink, blue, brown there. And through 2025, this is what it would change to. So that's showing Fannin, sorry, I'm going back one, showing Fannin merging with Altaloma, McGill merging with Austin, and then San Jacinto. McGill, uh, merging with Austin and then San Jacinto merging with Reagan. Once again, uh, this is the, the draft master plan after most a year of, of working and visiting campuses and talking with the staff and administration and, um, I think that might be one of our, yeah, that's one of our last slides there. So, uh, we're recommending, um, this master plan to help with some of your current needs and we're excited about the opportunity. And you have any questions?
Make sure my microphone's on. Thank you, Mr. Lopez. I, I certainly appreciate that as, um, our board and leadership team consider, uh, the recommendations. Just a recap for our audience, um, and just community members. Early on, I guess January 22, um, and Mr. Henry can correct me on some of my assumptions on dates, um, we had a request for proposal for architectural firms to assess our facilities and the conditions of our facilities, um, uh, here in San Angelo. And at that point, um, your firm, Park Hill, was chosen. Specifically, I remember some of the evaluation process was that you, uh, your firm had experience in school closure, uh, and also had worked with, uh, many of our, our West Texas, uh, colleagues. Could you flip back to the, uh, map of Texas with the, um, early on in the presentation that kind of shows that some of our, our, uh, similar cities in West Texas, uh, are also experiencing a, a student enrollment loss? So a, a loss of student enrollment, you can see, um, Plainview, Snyder, Abilene, Lubbock, Big Spring. So in our area, uh, these schools are all, also experiencing a, a student loss. Since, uh, the pandemic about the last three years, um, we've basically been operating at almost, this is my 14th year in SA ISD and majority of those years, we've been in about 14,500 students. Um, and I think as of this week, we're about at 13,600 students. Uh, so we have experienced an enrollment loss coupled with, uh, the aging conditions of our facilities, uh, and some severe infrastructure needs, quite frankly. So we have some severe infrastructure needs with some of our aging facilities, uh, and also, uh, ensuring that we, uh, are providing the conditions for learning, uh, that are suited, uh, for our, our modern learner. So this is an opportunity to look at that to again be, you saw early in the presentation, good stewards of our, our money. I think our, uh, our business office and team and, and Board of Trustees has been extremely frugal. Uh, they have practiced, uh, fiscally conservative policies and practices that allow, that have allowed us to generate, uh, the expected $20 million that we would need without going to the taxpayers or our community for an additional bond. So at this juncture, um, because of our conservative fiscal approach, we have the funds, uh, to cover the, um, approximately $20 million that would, uh, be needed to restructure, repurpose, uh, and combine and merge some of these, uh, schools, which again, we generate some of that, uh, those monies. I think the one slide I saw was 500,000, half a million dollars, uh, at, at one site alone. I think it's also important that our public know that we're going to do everything we can to retain and hire quality staff. Part of that is looking around our peer districts and around the state and ensuring that our classroom teachers, our campus principals, administrators, um, and, and all employees, uh, have the opportunity, uh, to make a, an adequate, good living in San Angelo. We want to keep our people here. Also, that, that may require, uh, and our Board of Trustees, the last six of seven years has provided a, a great cost of living, uh, percentage increase, uh, when many school districts have not. Even any many, even many institutions locally, uh, have not provided the cost of, of living increase than the percentages that our Board of Trustees have, uh, provided us. And it's, it's still difficult. We know that, um, the cost of, of housing and living is increasing. And so I think what we look at that in our district, it, it's about approximately $900,000 for a 1% raise for our staff. So also, when you look at some of these school merger options, it also creates the conditions for sustainability when we look forward five, 10 years down the road so that we can continue to provide our staff, uh, you know, the, the opportunities and compensation that are needed to retain the masterful, uh, teaching and learning that we have going on in our schools. So I think you have to look at this more than just school merging, or I think we have to look at what it does fiscally for us and to again celebrate the, the work our board and leadership team and campus principals have done, uh, by being, uh, fiscally conservative. And we have, uh, you know, the $20 million, uh, that would be needed to look at some of these infrastructure issues. So, uh, again, uh, Park Hill is making a recommendation, uh, but we also know that, uh, we need to take swift action, um, if we're going to, to show, uh, some improvements. And also there's academic improvements that, uh, you've seen, uh, with, uh, school consolidation as well. Um, so we like our neighborhood school concept. Uh, we believe that some of the, um, the recommendations shown, keep that in close proximity to existing schools as possible. So, uh, you guys have been a pleasure to work with and, uh, we thank you sincerely for your recommendation and the hard work and your efforts that have gone into looking at, uh, uh, how we, uh, continue to be sustainable, um, in the future for San Angelo ISD. So I'll turn it over to our board members for questions and additional comments.
Mr. Wolf, I know that you spoke earlier on about you're working with, you had worked with 18 or so districts so far about school consolidations. That's just your firm alone. That's not every one in the state of Texas, so it's not an uncommon practice.
That's correct.
That's just, just specific to your agency. And then secondarily, you know, we talked about the, the range of students being the 500 to 600 range, somewhere in there, 650. It's not only an economy and scale issue, it's an educational opportunity to offer more services to those kids.
That, that's correct.
In that combined environment. So I just want to make sure we talked about that.
Yes, that's, that's right. Those were just, these are just some examples of, of places that we have been and have had experience with, with these clients. But we, we do, I, I know that there are other districts around the state that are either involved in that process or talking seriously about that process. And as you're saying, uh, the, I think the focus in, uh, keeping the focus on service to the student, if you're able to provide more resources in, in the classroom and, and in the case of some of the facilities that, that you all have where you're, I, I know, uh, spending a lot of time in maintenance and, and the, the facility staff is trying to keep some of these older facilities going. If you, if you think about how that might translate into other funds that you could pour into, uh, into a, a newer, uh, facility or renovating one, uh, that's, that's not quite as, uh, has as much age on it, that you could really provide some great opportunities for your students.
I just want to, um, reiterate a couple of things. One, I think the, from the board standpoint, we knew we had, and we've known this for several years, we have, uh, campuses that are in, uh, in facilities that are in, um, desperate need of, uh, renovation, uh, or repairs. And we've known this since our first bond. We, uh, we, it wasn't that we had great facilities, um, uh, that were not touched by the first bond, we just didn't have enough money to touch all the facilities. So, uh, we've been looking at, uh, opportunities to address those other campuses since the first bond was passed a few years ago and, and we had two bonds that failed since then. So from the board standpoint, it was like, okay, we've got facilities that are in desperate need of, uh, repairs or renovation, uh, but we also know that we're having declining enrollment since our last bond and we wanted that studied as to the campuses, uh, that needed, uh, renovations and, and what was happening, as you've already pointed out, what's happening with their enrollment and which campuses are, uh, better able to, uh, to, to maybe, uh, take on more students and, and which ones might be, um, more eligible to close based on the cost that it would, uh, that it would, uh, be to repair those facilities when they're continuing to lose students. But we also wanted to know what could be done without a bond issue because we didn't think that right now is appropriate time to call a bond and we had some money. Uh, as Dr. Detloff said, that we've been trying to get saved up to, to do some of this. And we also wanted to, you, and I don't know if you mentioned this, but we really didn't want our middle school and high school feeder programs, uh, altered if we did make any, uh, combinations of any of those elementary schools. So you tried to address all those needs. The other thing that I just wanted to point out to anybody that's watching here, uh, in our meeting or also on Channel 4 is that, uh, these are all just recommendations at this time. We are not going to take a vote tonight and say, this is what we're going to do. Uh, Dr. Detloff and his admin staff are going to have some, uh, meetings, uh, with, uh, parents and, um, uh, neighborhood persons in those areas that we might want to, uh, potentially close schools, town hall meetings and get input and better, uh, provide those areas with more information about what, uh, might be planned before we, um, you know, absolutely say this is what we're going to do. So, uh, for you guys from Park Hill, we really appreciate all the work that you've done because you've done what we ask you to do, uh, as experts to study this issue for us and present it to us. What you've done tonight is what you've been telling us, uh, you were going to get to is this is the results of our studies and our efforts. So you've, so we appreciate what you've done. And now our, um, board and our admin team will take that and see what our next steps will be, including, uh, as I said, having the town hall meetings on any campuses that might be closed or might be expanded. Is there any other board, uh, comments?
Just a comment. I just want to tell you thank you for, for what you've done. And like most people, you know, like most things that we do here, this is a, a plan, the last year, we're looking at 20 years down the road. And, and that's what, that's what we have to do. And of course, we did that in 2008, we're almost 20 years down the road already since 2008. But, um, we're already, but now this is going forward. And like I, I think I mentioned it when we were talking about this, that when I first got on the board, we were at 13.5, okay? And then somewhere in between there, we got up to 14.5. And now we're back down at 13.5. That's been in a span of 18 years. So it goes up and down, up and down. And I think we're going with that flow, just preparing for what's going to happen next. And, you know, I was looking at all this stuff that y'all gave us and y'all, y'all done a great job. And I just want to tell you thank you and like Max said, that, that this is a recommendation and we'll look at it.
All right, thank you guys. Next is our student enrollment report, and I think that Dr. Bright reported to us that we're about 199 students down from where we were last year, which is what we had, uh, were expecting there. Again, our student enrollment has been going down. Our, and then, uh, Dr. Gomez, uh, you have something on, uh, update on academic programs?
Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff and members of the board, this evening, it's actually Dr. Radley Self. She's SA ISD's District Coordinator for School Improvement. I don't think she totally ran away, she's back there. She's going to come up in just a second, but before she does, I would like to thank Dr. Self as our district contact, as she's worked endlessly with our campus leadership teams, with the campuses engaged in this work. Last week, y'all received some really big packets, so you received the comprehensive plans. This evening, Dr. Self is going to go over just a highlight, our district highlight for each one of those plans, and you had a copy of this at your seats, so you can follow along. We'll have it up on the televisions, but sometimes it's easier if you follow along at your seats. So Dr. Self, I think we're ready.
Good evening, Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff and members of the board. I sincerely appreciate the opportunity to provide a high-level overview of San Angelo ISD's targeted improvement plans. A targeted improvement plan or TIP, that's how you're going to hear me refer to those, um, is basically a structured system that allows campuses to build a year-long strategic plan. Campuses use TIPS to break down goals into short cycles and analyze possible barriers to achieving the identified school improvement goals. This is just a quick district overview. We actually have eight campuses that are required to submit a TIP to TEA this year. Four of those campuses are actually recipients of the Effective Schools Framework Grant. Those campuses are Altaloma Elementary, Bradford Elementary, Glenn Middle School and Reagan Elementary. Additionally, we have campuses, five total, that are recipients of the School Improvement Grant. Those campuses are Austin Elementary, Bradford Elementary, Goliad, Holloman and Lone Star Middle School. Um, and just to clarify, some of those campuses that receive, um, an Effective Schools Framework Grant, um, might not, um, be required under normal circumstances in regards to accountability measures, um, to submit those to TEA, but because they're a part of the ESF grant, it is a requirement to meet that grant. So what does submitting a TIP plan entail? So we are required to engage in four cyclic reviews of data analysis and action step assignments. So cycle one spans from September to November. Cycle two spans from December to February. Cycle three is March to May and cycle four is June to August. And in these cyclic reviews, we participate via Zoom. Our Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Gomez, myself, the District Coordinator of School Improvement and Principal Supervisors, which would be myself, Mrs. Huddleston and Mr. Cullenbach, are required to participate. So in the cyclic reviews, we have to provide a justification, um, of why we came to the conclusion of what high-leverage actions each of those campuses that are engaged in TIP plans had to take. We also have to provide evidence for, um, as a viable source of data in tracking student progress and we have to provide artifacts in cycle two, cycle three and cycle four It is important that we recognize our district commitment in supporting our campuses and it's very well encompassed in our Commitment Theory of Action. And it reads as follows. If San Angelo ISD's district commitment is to provide support and resources needed that align to the fundamental five, which are our learner profile, our educator profile, our district and board goals, capturing kids' hearts and our CBAS system, then our students, teachers and leaders will thrive in a sustainable, positive culture. Additionally, um, it is important to understand that we are making the commitment too at the district level to try to streamline the TIP writing process. It is a very cumbersome process for campus principals and we think it's really important to align that work to current district and campus initiatives and move it from a compliance piece to an actual tool and resource that they can utilize. And in just some areas, for example, we are trying to work really hard to align it to a campus needs assessment or a campus improvement plan, um, catch- a campus needs assessment or a campus improvement plan, capturing kids' hearts, and also our recent work with MTSS. So we're going to go through a high-level overview of each campus's targeted improvement plan. So each of these plans will encompass a prioritized focus area. Those PFAs are derived from what's called an ESF diagnostic, an Effective Schools Framework Diagnostic. And we actually have those diagnostics performed by our friends at Region 15, so it's an outside source. And basically, it's just like its name. It's a diagnostic. So they're looking at every aspect of a campus as an organization. For example, they're looking at strong school leadership and planning, strategic staffing, positive school culture, high-quality instructional materials and assessments, effective instruction and data-driven instruction. So we're just going to jump right in here and take a look at our Altaloma friends. And if you recall, Altaloma is actually a recipient for the ESF school grant. So just to note that. The Apaches, I would like to just start out by stating that they were able to meet all of their ELAR reading targets, particularly for student growth, which is a tremendous achievement. When we look at a campus prioritized focused area, which in this case is 5.1, Effective Classroom Routines and Instructional Strategies, as well as 5.3, Data-Driven Instruction, you're going to see some similarities across campuses. There are some differences, but there's a reason why we landed on those prioritized-focused areas because they're high leverage. Once again, our targeted goals, these are based on an analysis of multiple data points. Yes, we do use STAR as a launching point, but that's not the end-all, be-all when we sit down with the campus principals to write these targeted goals. For Altaloma Elementary, after looking at their data, there are two focus areas that we felt like were predominantly needed to be focused on, and those are ELAR, all grades for our Hispanic and white subpops. So when we look at desired annual outcomes, we work with the campus leadership teams to basically work backwards, begin with the end in mind, right? So where do we want to end our school year this year? So in response to 5.1, the desired annual outcome is basically having 90% of teachers in grades three through five unpacking those high-leverage standards. And what that means is ensuring that teachers know the depth and complexity of their TEES, which is extremely important. That's one of those high-leverage actions that research tells us we need to focus on. Additionally, 5.3, their desired annual outcome will focus on 90% of teachers consistently looking at data in their PLC meetings, identifying student gaps, and then talking about and determining when reteach will happen, what it'll look like, how it will take place. That is another high-leverage strategy that you might see consistently across campuses. Moving on to our Austin Elementary Bulldogs, they made great strides in this past school year, especially when you look at closing the gaps. Their students hit every ELAR reading target. And that is tremendous and what we like to see. And under Mrs. Cullenbach's leadership, we know that she's going to keep that on an upward trajectory for us. In regards to prioritized focus areas, you're going to see 5.1 and 5.3 again. And in those targeted goals, after analyzing again multiple points of data, they landed on focusing on math for all grades for the white subpopulation, as well as ELAR, all grades for the white subpopulation. Their desired annual outcomes, their campus leadership team worked really closely together, I'll have to say. In regards to 5.1, they're going to focus on 90% of their lessons being aligned to the TEES, which is extremely important. When you jump down to 5.3, again, it's looking at that progress data, making a plan for what reteach will look like and when that will happen. So looking at Bradford Elementary, the Lobos were definitely on the prowl last year. They were making some great strides. They, too, also hit every ELAR reading target when you look at closing the gaps performance data. Their prioritized focus area is 4.1, High Quality Instructional Materials and Assessments, as well as 5.3. Their targeted goals are going to land on ELAR and math for all students in their Hispanic subpop. So when we look at their desired annual outcomes, their campus leadership team also worked very closely with their principal supervisor, as well as their internal campus leadership team, and determined that by the end of this school year, they want 90% of their teachers to understand that process for unpacking the standards, which is really critical. Additionally, in 5.3, like some other campuses that we have looked at before, just really looking at that data consistently in weekly PLC meetings to determine where the gaps are, making a plan on what reteach will look like and when it will take place. All right, the Glenn Middle School Raiders. So just to note, they are also an ESF grant recipient. They were actually rated a C campus for accountability purposes. And they are definitely engaging in the great work and continuing their accomplishments, and especially under the direction of Mr. Clayton Hubbard. So we're really excited at seeing him continue that great work. Just like their friends at Bradford, their prioritized focus areas are 4.1 and 5.3. Their targeted goals are ELAR, all grades for their Hispanic subpop, as well as math, all grades for their Hispanic subpop. In 4.1, they're also going to look at 90% of lessons being aligned to the TEES, which is extremely critical. And again, in 5.3, looking at that progress monitoring data, identifying gaps, and making a plan for reteach. So the Goliad Elementary Eagles, they certainly soared to tremendous growth this past year. And Mrs. Klepak led her troops to see an attainment of hitting all of her ELAR student growth targets across the board under closing the gaps. As you can see, that campus is also focusing on 5.1 and 5.3. And they're actually, they did really well in ELAR, so they are shifting their focus and going to tackle math as their targeted goal and across all grades in their Hispanic and white subpops. For their desired annual outcomes, again, 5.1, unpacking that standard to the depth and complexity that it needs to be for teachers and building capacity in them. And then also in 5.3, just analyzing that, the data, making a plan for reteach and knowing when and how, what it will look like. In regards to Holloman Elementary, just like their Lobo friends, they're on the prowl, too. They continue building on the success that they saw in ELAR for student growth across closing the gaps and hitting all targets. They are under the leadership of Stacy Fisher this year, and she will be facilitating efforts towards those prioritized focused areas of 5.1 and 5.3. Their targeted goals are going to center on ELAR and math across all grades in the white subpop. And again, in 5.1, unpacking those standards. And 5.3, looking at student data, planning for reteach. Lone Star Middle School. So under the direction of the newly-minted Dr. Amy LaMaster, the Lone Star Texans attained an accountability rating of C. I think that's really important to note. They are continuing to make great strides under her leadership and saw a plethora of ELAR targets be met under student growth for closing the gaps. She worked really closely with her campus leadership team and us as well, I'll have to say. They landed on the prioritized focused area 5.1 and 5.3. They're going to target math, all grades, Hispanic subpop, as well as ELAR, all grades, but the special education subpop. So in 5.1, Mrs. LaMaster was, or Dr. LaMaster was actually very instrumental in writing this outcome, I'll have to say. She does have three new APs, so that itself poses quite a challenge. But under her leadership, we know that they're going to soar because of the goals that she's written, just like we're seeing here. So she wants to build leadership capacity in those APs. She knows that's critically important, and she's going to do that by engaging in high-quality informal walkthroughs with them, talking through what instructional best practices look like and calibrating with her leadership team, which is huge. And also 5.3, I'll have to say, Dr. LaMaster and her campus leadership team really thoughtfully wrote this goal because they're at a point where their students are ready to implement student-facing data trackers. And research shows that those students that engage in that practice are highly motivated and setting their goals and tracking their own performance. So very good outcomes for Lone Star Middle School. And then the Reagan Rockets, I just honestly want to start the slow clap for this campus because of the great work that they attained. They definitely, the Rockets rocketed to the top this past year and earned an accountability rating of a B, which is tremendous. And again, they are an ESF focus grant, and that is why they are submitting a TIP. So like many campuses before, their prioritized focused areas, 5.1, 5.3, math across all grades will be targeted, especially in the Hispanic and their emergent bilingual subpop. So again, desired annual outcomes, 5.3, it's critical to unpack the standards to the depth and complexity that they need to be for teachers. And then 5.3, again, looking at that grade level data, making a plan for where the gaps are and what the reteach is going to look like. I think it's kind of fitting to end with Reagan, is their actions that they took to attain that kind of success, even though we saw success in all of the campuses that we looked at this go-round. But their actions really embody the process and the structure of how we are going to complete and maintain our TIPS this year. I hope there were some words that kind of stood out to you, like high leverage. You know, if you focus on two high-leverage areas and really narrow your focus and be consistent and intentional with your practices, you will definitely see success, just like they did. And that's kind of why we are going to take the trajectory that we are with writing our TIPS. So at this time, I would entertain any questions that you have.
Dr. Self, we mentioned, I noticed that 5.1, 5.3 is across all of these schools, and we talk a lot about the PLC and the reteaching, which is extremely difficult to do because of time. So with the PLC, would you be the one that like communicates across? Let's say Goliad has a great PLC, they have figured out how the retesting goes, and you would help the other elementaries communicate like PLC across the district?
Absolutely. That's kind of the beauty in collaboration, and that's one of the things I'll have to Again, from the district perspective, we think it's important in, you know, open lines of communication and transparency. And, you know, if we see a stellar practice at one campus, we're definitely going to share that with others, so.
Good, because I know that can be a tricky little thing. And then I wanted to comment on the data tracking at Lone Star. I think that's a great tool. And when kids set a goal and they are responsible, take ownership of their learning, and instead of just the teacher or the parent, that's where we're going to see gains. So I appreciate the fact that they're, because that's in itself is a challenge, to get kids to keep up with all that.
It sure is, but I can attest, they're up for the challenge, for sure. They've got a great plan in place.
Would you reiterate just the acronym PLC, it's all through your talk, what that means?
Yes, sir. It's a professional learning community. And basically, it is outside of, typically outside of the teacher's conference time, but it's a structured, protected time so that teachers can get together, look at data, make plans, and just collaborate, in a nutshell.
That's a nice nutshell. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions of Dr. Self?
Just a comment, Dr. Self. I was speaking to one of our principals this past weekend about Reagan, and you were right in what they did. And it was really, they did a wonderful job. They did a wonderful job. So, and just hope they can just keep moving forward like they've all been and see how this works for you. So, thank you.
Yes, sir. They make it easy. They're pretty high-caliber leaders.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Self, for all your hard work on this and for explaining it to us. This is going to be something as an action item later on our agenda. And so, thank you. All right. Now we'll go into our consent items. We have consent items A through G. A is consider donations. B is consider approval of authorized list of investment brokers-dealers. C is consider approval of the CDA local investment policy for SAISD. D is consider approval of the authorized list of investment training providers. E is considered, if we have any, do we have, we do have two, two, consider superintendent's recommendation for personnel for school year 2022, 2023. So we've got two that we'll add tonight. Consider RFP number 22-018, gym floor refinishing, and consider bid number 22-022, data cabling. These are all items that we discussed at our pre-agenda meeting last week and decided to put on our consent item. Do I have, do I hear a motion to approve our consent items A through G?
Motion to approve consent items A through G.
Second.
And that was Ms. Mizell Flint, right? Okay. All right. So we had a motion by Dr. Kingman and a second by Ms. Mizell Flint to approve our consent item. Is there any other board discussion? Is there any public comment? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion passes. Next, which we have on every one of our agendas, consider bills, accounts, and financial statements for September 2022. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Dindel and a second by Mr. Gallegos.
And just as my weekly or monthly public service announcement, that all our bills, accounts, and financial statements are available on our website under departments, under financial services, and financial transparency, including our check register.
Thank you, Dr. Kingman. Any other board comment? Any public comment? All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion passes. Now, what we just got through discussing, Dr. Gomez's name is on it, but consider targeted improvement plans, those are the plans that were just discussed by Dr. Self for all those campuses, Altaloma, Austin, Bradford, Glenn, Goliad, Holloman, Lone Star, and Reagan. Is there anything more you need to say about that? Dr. Gomez?
I would just like to add that these have to be approved by December 16th, but again, due to Dr. Self, her hard work, and the hard work of those campuses and the campus leadership teams, they're being brought to you early for approval.
Thank you, Dr. Gomez. I'll make the motion that we approve the targeted improvement plans for Austin, Holloman, Goliad, Lone Star, under comprehensive support and improvement, and Altaloma, Bradford, Glenn, and Reagan, under Effective Schools Framework Focus Support. And a second by Dr., I mean by Mr. Dindel. So I've made the motion. Mr. Dindel seconded it. Is there any other board discussion? Is there any public comment? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion passes. say aye. All opposed say no. Motion passes. And last, we have Consider Official Appointment to the Board of Trustees of the MHMR Services for the Concho Valley. Dr. Detloff?
Mr. Parker, excuse me, I'm sorry. I need to recuse myself from this vote since I work for MHMR.
All right. Ms. Mizell Flint, well, we recuse from discussion and vote on this. Dr. Detloff?
Yes, sir. Mr. Parker, members of the board, for many years, the San Angelo ISD Board of Trustees have really nominated or had a liaison from our board serve on the MHMR of Concho Valley. I believe it was last week, our very own Pam Duncan jumped into her board leadership and service and attended this meeting. And at this meeting, nominees were requested by our liaisons and Ms. Duncan to serve for the Board of MHMR. And you can see those listed on Page 71. Carrie Houston, Don McKee, Sangita Singh, Drew Peterson. And then the recommended board action is that our board approve the official appointment of the nominees as recommended by our liaison representative.
All right. Is there any other board discussion or questions? If not, is there anyone who wants to make a motion for this?
Mr. Parker, move for approval of the official appointment of the nominees as recommended by the liaison representatives. Second.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Dindel and a second by Dr. Kingman. Is there any other board discussion? Ms. Mizell Flint is noted, will not be participating. Is there any public comment? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed say no. The motion passes approving this agenda item. Now, that's all we have on, and Mr. Gallegos, would you tell Ms. Mizell Flint she can come back in? If you want to? Dr. Detloff's, well, let me wait until Mr. Gallegos gets back, because he's our secretary and he has to make a note on it. Mr. Gallegos and other board members, Dr. Detloff says we need to go into executive session quickly under Texas Government Code 551.074, Personnel Matters. So, we'll adjourn and be back in a few minutes. We're back from executive session. We took no, we had no votes, and we took no action. And with that, our meeting is adjourned.